The time, comments should be addressed to the board. Please adhere to the time limit when you have, it's two minutes. When you have 30 seconds left, the yellow light will show, so start winding it down. When the red light comes in, please conclude your sentence. The majority of the speaker's time must be spent on the topic that you have indicated you wish to speak about. No racial slurs, personal insults, ridicule, or threats will be allowed. And all signs should adhere to the same. Please read three folks at a time so that you can set yourself up so we can make that elegant transition. Thank you so much.
First up for public testimony, we have Tuan Nguyen, followed by Chris Jackins, and then Alex Zimmerman.
All right. Hello, my name is Tuan Nguyen, and I'm a junior at Chief South International High School. The first thing I would like to talk about is the funding in local high schools. Chief South is one of the most diverse schools in the Pacific Northwest with many students coming from many backgrounds. Because of this, there are also many students who struggle with being on the same level of playfield on the more fortunate and wealthier families. On the other hand, in a place such as the West Seattle High School neighborhood, their income is generally higher, and as a result, West Seattle is able to receive more funding from their parents to their various departments. To offer a brief solution, PTAs over the SBS district could share their resources with other less fortunate schools as a step towards socioeconomic equity. I am part of the band program at Chief South and one of the captains on the mock child team there. Both of these extracurriculars hold a very special place in my heart as they were able to make me learn things in ways that differed from the normal academic schedule. Band opened up my creative pathway and allowed me to learn some music theory along, of course, how to play an instrument. Mock child forced me to open up and talk in front of others and critically analyze texts and situations and many other pertinent skills. Most importantly, I've joined a community while partaking in both programs. Community is abundantly important in creating a group where you can feel comfortable to essential, comfortable is essential to a successful learning environment. These two activities alone, I believe massively increased my growth as a scholar so much more compared to what the normal high school schedule could have taught me. I understand that recently there has been a lot of pushback on funding for multitudinous things, but do realize that these programs provide a hope for low-income people, myself included. Even if the money situation is dire, the student still has something to look forward to and believe in. I know this because I'm still under that mindset where if I put in enough work, hours and effort, I can make something happen for me and others. I truly believe in a future through the mock child program and the band program, which opens up doors to career paths for me. Extracurriculars serve as one of the best ringboards to a student's career and into a life beyond high school. Thank you.
My name is Chris Jackins, Box 84063, Seattle 98124. On the Lafayette Elementary and Washington Middle School projects, both contracts state that interim contracts were already awarded to the same architect. Does this practice bias the awarding of the main contracts? On Loyal Heights Final Acceptance, two points. Number one, the playground size has been dramatically reduced. Number two, please adopt an amendment to require an explicit evaluation of impacts to playground space in the environmental review for all school construction projects. On the Northgate and Vuelens Replacement Projects, two points. Number one, the reports list recent improvements for each school. What did these improvements cost, which are now proposed to be demolished? Number two, the total project budget for Northgate Elementary is $90 million. Does it make sense for the district to rush forward during a high-cost period? On the personnel report, two points. Number one, the report notes the departure of John Kroll, the district's chief information officer. I wish to thank Mr. Kroll for his work for the district. Number two, one project that his department had looked at was restarting the publication of the district's annual data profile report. I would appreciate getting a copy of the report. On the school bus settlement agreement, two points. Number one, in Section H, there seem to be two points labeled number eight. Number two, with regard to labor peace, if the company fails to comply, the district would no longer be able to seek damages. This would seem to reduce the leverage of the district and of bus drivers. Also, please reopen Indian Heritage High School and the African-American Academy. Thank you.
After Alex Zimmerman, we'll have Yvette Dinesh, followed by Erin Fish and Brad Suboco.
Demo pig from animal farm, a fascist, a Gestapo antisemite and killer. My name, Alex Zimmerman. You know why I speak about what's happened in this agenda? Because I come right now for a long time. You're talking about racism? You brainwash your us children for many years. We don't have racism in Seattle right now. We have a fascism. It's a totally different, and fascism never have a color. Fascism can be to everybody. It's exactly what is you doing right now. You teach us children something, but you not open Pandora box what is you supposed to be doing like a teacher. Why? I explain to you where is a problem we have. Where is black community right now in Seattle? Gone. Where is minority? Gone. Where is poor people? Gone. Where is senior citizen? Gone. Thousand people dying. Why? Because we have a fascism when government together with corporations suck blood and money from us. And who did this for last few years? It's very interesting. Six council, Seattle council is a color people. Six. Six women. You know what it's mean? Gonzalez, we relate constitutional law open public meeting act five times. Nobody talking about this. Not touchable. They fascist. Is this exactly what is I want to explain to you? When you don't teach us children about America, Constitution, freedom of speech, open public act, and exactly what is America doing for everybody? And make everybody equal under Constitution is exactly what has happened. This will be big problem right now. If for another few years, we'll be more and more and more problem. In everything what is right now, we need change. So stand up, America. We need bring Seattle back to normal life what is we have before. Thank you very much.
Yvette Dinesh, I want to thank Alex Zimmerman because at least he's consistent, and I respect that. Yvette Dinesh, this is my husband Tyrone Kenny. We're Raina Beach aficionados. And so I was originally going to address the first student settlement agreement, but I think there's so much voices here today. I'm gonna let them speak on that, but it got me thinking about the busing. And the fact that some kids that are homeless are being a taxi to school. And that got me to think about the homeless situation and the number of kids that are homeless in the Seattle Public School system. And one of my solutions would be, it may be too late now, but when you're doing capital building projects, to consider being, building affordable housing above the schools. As long as you got the school tore up a building, think about that. And that, you know, because this is also number 14 on the agenda. Jody O'neal needed to be speaking about that. And so another reason why I'm concerned about the homeless is because there's an article in the Seattle Times the other day about how they're faring poorly because their housing insecure. And when we went to a workshop last year with the Seattle Times about students not being able to do homework because they're homeless. And I brought that question up about, you know, shouldn't that be a school issue? And they said, no, it's not. I totally disagree. That should be part of the conversation. These kids be, it was an expert from out of town, so what does she know? But it needs to be considered when the housing is secured. And that brings me back to my Raina Beach neighborhood where it's, you know, one of the diverse zip codes in the country. The IB program, there's still some question about its being funded. It bothers me, it kind of hurts my feelings when you talk about a voice is being heard, educational justice, racial equity and diversity, and Raina Beach is still having to struggle and advocate to get their funding, and they were extremely successful about that. So put some action behind your words and see that they get properly funded at Raina Beach High School. And thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Erin Fish. Thank you for allowing me to speak up. My son Declan is four years old, and in his short life, he has battled brain cancer twice. The harsh treatment and eight brain surgeries has left him with developmental delays, and he attends preschool with an IEP to get the services he needs. It's really hard to put a vulnerable preschool on our bus, but knowing he needs these services through Seattle Public Schools, I do so, so that I can also get to work to pay for the rest of his medical care. I put all of my trust in the transportation system that he's going to get to school on time to get the IEP services he needs and also to get there safely. This has not been the case for the past two years. In 2018, he attended Thurgood Marshall, and the bus was either late or didn't show up for over 20 times. Therefore, he missed some critical IEP hours, and I miss work having to stay home with him or take him to school. This year, Declan is attending preschool at the EEU. We are into the second month of school, and his route still does not have a regular assigned driver. A different bus shows up at our house every day, sometimes with booster seats, sometimes not. They're usually scrambling to get them. And I put all of this aside until this past Monday where Declan's bus hit another car on I-5. And there's a picture that Bow is holding up here. Sorry, I'm nervous. Declan's bus hit this car, and all I could think of was I haven't lost him to cancer yet, but a fear ensued in me that I could lose him to just getting to school from a bus crash. On Monday, I witnessed that bus driver driving erratically. She was late to our house by over 40 minutes and was not coherent when I was able to speak with her. She just said she didn't know how to put in the booster seats, which is why she was so late. She didn't see me and my entire family waving her down on the street and past our house quite a few times. I am just asking that the school district be committed to timely and safe transportation, and that we have a regular bus driver on these routes with proper safety seats for our preschoolers.
After Brad, we will have John Greenberg, followed by Carol Simmons, and then Amy Pace.
I am told Brad's not here. That doesn't count, right? The time? Okay. Hello, I testified last June with the following thesis statement. We need more, we need to make racial equity work mandatory in Seattle Public Schools. I also asserted that when you're asking us educators to center racial equity, you are often asking us to oppose our very own bosses, our district administrators. Tonight, I'd like to offer some more evidence of that. In partnership with the Center for Racial Equity, the district now offers four three-part trainings, including racial equity literacy and ethnic studies. These trainings are part of what made the Ethnic Studies Summer Institute such a resounding success. The description of these trainings was compiled into a three-page handout and distributed to schools, but through the principals. I have surveyed teachers across the district, and most never received this handout. In other words, scores of principals did not share the document with their staff or even the school's BLT, which is in charge of professional development. We can celebrate that 30 schools have requested such trainings, but we also have to remember that that means 70 schools have not. And they don't need to because racial equity trainings are not mandatory. But it gets worse. At one of these trainings this year, at Ballard, a teacher, predictably a white male, pushed back against a racial equity literacy 101 training. He asserted that Trayvon Martin jumped George Zimmerman and began shouting at the trainers. Staff encouraged an administrator to intervene. His response, "Now is not the time. Now is not the time." I ask you, what consequences does the district really face when it fails at addressing racism? I know it must be embarrassing when it gets to the press that a white teacher is called 911 on a black 10 or 11-year-old child, but do you or the principals or the executives that line this room really face any concrete consequences? I'm asking because I do not know. I have two more questions. If you were the Ethnic Studies Program Manager and you had a staff of exactly zero, how would you achieve, and I'm quoting from your 2017 Ethnic Studies Resolution, "Districtwide integration of ethnic studies into existing and future K-12 curriculum, including courses required for graduation"? I'm asking because I don't know. I don't think it's possible to do so. And so my last question is, will you please do something courageous in support of ethnic studies because we need you? Thank you for your time.
My name is Carol Simmons. The UWAA Multicultural Alumni Partnership MAP invites everyone to attend the Bridging the Gap Breakfast on October 19th that will be held in the University of Washington Hub Ballroom. For 25 years, MAP has worked to connect the region's diverse communities, promote equity at the UW, and celebrate achievements of distinguished alums, community members, and students. The MAP Breakfast benefits the MAP Endowment Scholarship Fund, which reached the $1 million mark last year. This year, two former Seattle Public School students are recipients of MAP scholarships. They are Christian Love, fifth grade, or fifth year doctoral student in the College of Education, who volunteers as a youth mentor at Denny Middle School, and William Walker, a graduate of West Seattle High School and a junior in the field of ethnic studies. Previously with great pride, MAP honored school board directors Patu and Pinkum as distinguished alums for their commitment to diversity. 25 years ago, Superintendent Stanford spoke to 30 attendees in a tiny room at the hub. Last year, a live band entertained over 300 attendees in the hub ballroom. In fact, many guests got up and danced spontaneously, enthusiastically, celebrating the endowment, the student scholarship recipients, the distinguished alums and diversity. It was so fun to watch UW President Kase, King County Executive Constantine, Martin Luther King County Councilman Gossett, UW Regent Rice, and School Board Director President Harris dancing with wild jubilation in celebration. Call the UWAA to register for the MAP Breakfast and congratulate the student scholarship recipients, honor the distinguished alums, and if you so choose, dance with the stars. Thank you.
Carol, if we sign up, do we get to sit at your table?
Of course, you can all.
All in. Thank you.
After Amy Pace, we will have Yuki Sofranas, followed by Anthony Sofranas, and then Antoinette Angulo.
Good evening. I would like to thank the board for the opportunity to provide public testimony. I am here in opposition to the proposal to convert John Stanford and McDonald International from option schools to attendance area schools. This plan has been framed as a solution to over-enrollment in other neighborhood schools, which is a legitimate concern. But I believe that at its heart, the solution represents a challenge to the district's commitment to equity and inclusion. I am a parent, but I am also a researcher at the University of Washington. I study how early language and literacy lead to lifelong learning. The data are clear. Traditional models of neighborhood schooling often serve to perpetuate racial and socioeconomic inequities. The proposed change is directly conflict with the district's stated priorities for enrollment planning, which include actively seeking greater representation from historically underrepresented communities and ensuring equity and equal opportunity for students throughout Seattle. It must be acknowledged that our heritage language speakers and our students of color would lose the most from this proposed change. When I moved my family here from Philadelphia, I was thrilled to learn that my children might have the opportunity to study in a public school that celebrates cultural differences and strives for global citizenship, even though we don't live in the geozone. I believe to provide the same opportunity for more students, the district should increase, not decrease, access to dual-language immersion programs. With every decision, no matter how small, we need to continue our progress toward equity and educational justice. Thank you.
Buenas noches. I'm Yuki Sofranas, a parent of Northwest Pathway of Dual-Language Immersion Program, parent of eighth grader and fourth grader. Putting aside my hat as a parent of John Stanford and Hamilton, my friend and I volunteered at a SPS Admission Fair in January this year. International Education Administrator Michelle Aoki and two of us kept answering questions for four hours and rined us in dress. We felt very strong demand for DLI from many community of this city. Why I really care about Dual-Language Immersion Program so much? Eight years ago, my daughter joined John Stanford as a kindergartner. Many of the students didn't know the language. Amazingly, kids started counting Japanese and singing Spanish in playground and hallway in a couple of months, and they speak so naturally. Since students start the language young and early, I have been experiencing that students get two languages, no matter how they started. Yearly, I volunteer at fifth grade Japanese class as a judge for their final project before graduation. Students choose topic, research in Japanese, present in Japanese, and Q&amp;A session in Japanese. It's amazing. Being DLI parent for more than seven years, I started to notice language skill is not the only thing they have been learning. Students have been together in the same classroom with a mixture of I speak this language, you speak that language. Students are exposed to think many ways daily. They gain enliveness with many ways to look at things, and I start to realize that is essential for kids to become global citizens. Together with McDonald and Hamilton Lincoln, we would like to support completing pathway for global citizen education. Thank you so much.
I am nine years old, and I am in the Japanese Immersion Program at John Stanford. I have many friends there that I have made through the Immersion Program, and they come from all parts of Seattle. I have done the Japanese Immersion Program for five years, and I can speak it, write it, read it, and understand it fluently. The Immersion Program means a lot to me. Some of my friends have never been to Japan. If they would, they would be able to communicate in the country where they've never been. The Immersion Program is very important to us. We learn so much from it, and I like my friends and classmates. Please keep the Immersion Program. Thank you.
After Antoinette, we will have Manuela Sly, followed by Jody Only, and then Victor Dumas.
That's a hard act to follow. Thank you for your service to our district. I appreciate the complexity of the overcrowding situation at Green Lake Elementary, and I empathize with the families there. I'm here to represent or to read, well, first of all, my name's Antoinette Angulo. I'm the mother of a first grader in the Spanish program at John Stanford International School. I'm going to read some prepared remarks by a father, Victor Dumas, who's the dad of a kindergartner at John Stanford, who's in the Spanish program. You all should have copies of his remarks. I'm going to read just a few of these. Bottom line, he suggests instead of increasing geozones at John Stanford and McDonald, which would provide minimal relief to Green Lake, around the range of six to 12 students a year was sort of the prediction. In the short term, consider our underutilized or unoccupied space in the area, like perhaps at Lincoln High School, maybe the Fairview Building up in the Northeast. He suggests phasing out the geozone, but over maybe a five-year period. Also, increase heritage set-a-sites again over a five-year period at the same time. Some data that he pulled from the Seattle Public School enrollment website. According to enrollment data published by Seattle Public School District, John Stanford and JSIS and McDonald combined enrolled a total of 506 students living within the Green Lake Elementary service area. Nearly 50% of its total population and almost 25% more than Green Lake Elementary itself. About a third of the entire student body at John Stanford and McDonald does not live in the Green Lake Elementary service area or the BFD service area. However, this small group commutes from 38 other service areas to attend these schools, making both schools the most geographically diverse schools in the entire school district. By the way, John Stanford is an ethnic minority-majority school and has been for a few years now. Thank you.
My name is Manuela Sly. I'm Seattle Council PTSA president. For the record, I'm here as a parent of four kids, one, two, three, four, and a former member of the Dual-Language Immersion Task Force. Our first set of recommendations went to Dr. Nylan back in the summer of 2016, over three years ago. Including our recommendation to increase the set-a-side seats for heritage speakers from 15% to at least 30%. Concord 40% because of the area where they operate. Over the last three years, community efforts, emphasis in community efforts, because it was our community, trying to make this a reality. We have spoken to enrollment department. We have met with both principals from John Stanford and McDonald, brought it to the attention of the superintendent, and testify at board meetings, just like we are today. Unfortunately, despite our efforts, we haven't been successful. Now we're facing upcoming changes to Green Lake Attendance area that will greatly impact the access of heritage speakers to dual-language programs. So instead of going up to 30%, we're concerned that it's going to go even lower than the 15% that we have. Now we also have to look into the criteria, what is a heritage native speaker, because that's also a flawed process. Our community respectfully requests you to consider the task for recommendations before any changes are made in the new assignment plan. And I'm going to take my last, the rest of my time to share with you why dual language is important for our families. Because my kids had the opportunity to attend international schools with my girls, Adrienne Sabrina, have guaranteed seal of illiteracy on their high school diploma. I could not be more any prouder. My middle schooler here, Giovanni, is attending Denny, and he is taking Spanish. He's taking his Washington history classes in Spanish, as well as attending Proyecto Saberes and elective and Los Hermanos Unidos after school. He's thriving. And Marcelo, this little one, was able to spend time and help his abuelita, his grandmother from Mexico, at the store and at the local library last week when she came to visit. She doesn't speak English, so he was great help. So we're very proud of Marcelo as well. All my kids speak Spanish and can develop a relationship with their family in Mexico and learn about their culture and heritage. So please listen to heritage speakers and native speakers' families and don't take this away from us. Thank you.
After Jody, we will have Victor Dumas, followed by Christine Shigaki, and then Akiko Kurichi.
My name is Jody Only. I'm here on behalf of the Seattle Indian Services Commission to talk about our affordable housing project and the need to talk to you all. Came to my attention because we applied for funding with the City of Seattle, their Office of Housing, as well as the Housing Trust Fund. And one of the requirements, because we're aiming to serve workforce families at 50% and 60% AMI, is to have consultation with the local school district and also get feedback from the community about the increased enrollment that we anticipate in serving those families. We're in very early stages. We anticipate, over the course of two phases, building 200 units of affordable housing with units ranging from studios to three bedrooms. The goal being to serve families and multi-generational families as needed. So I think clarification would be appreciated. When I wrote to staff, they suggested I come testify. I don't know if there's a more formal process for facilitating the increased enrollment piece. We are continuing community outreach generally, as this is a multi-year process. But yeah, I think the schools that would be impacted or that are close to that site would be Billy Gutter Elementary, Washington Middle School, and Garfield High School. So I'll plan to circle back with staff unless people have questions now. Thanks.
Victor? Christine?
[inaudible]
Seattle resident. I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I agree with the district that we need to make courageous, bold, and brave changes to the inherently dysfunctional system. To help those that are furthest from educational justice, we need well-thought-out planning. The South End community is vulnerable and hasty decisions can greatly affect our community. If SPS believes in minority excellence, you must offer robust HCC programs in the Southeast. The gap will not close by limiting opportunities of those of color. Dissolving HCC in the Southeast area would be disastrous as there would not be a large enough cohort in each school to provide an opportunity of social-emotional support and academic rigor. This will only cause a greater divide in equity. Considerations to increase racial diversity in advanced learning, offering a range of programs where kids are academically challenged, including the outliers that are categorized as Hi-CAP. Rolling application and greater outreach to Southeast, South End schools, universal and racially nigh-biased testing. Encourage kids of color to participate in Hi-CAP. Diversity in teaching staff and mandatory cultural training. A test pilot program to see how MTSS would work prior to dissolving the HCC cohort. And follow the Alt-F people of color recommendation that includes preserving the cohort. Taft at Washington Middle School, no information has been given to us on how they will serve our huge range of divergent needs. One size does not fit all. Please listen to your community. After a difficult year last year, please let our leadership and our community rebuild before adding another change. As we work towards racial equity, please remember that it is a district's strategic plan to provide excellence in education for every student and its vision is that every student receives high-quality world-class education. It does not say at the expense of one cohort or another. If we are to achieve equity in its true form, the district should be promoting transparency, inclusivity, helpfulness, understanding, acceptance, and kindness. These attributes build trusting relationships, which is more important than data and numbers. Trust in relationships are necessary in working towards a both-and solution, which is key in working towards real and sustainable equity. Thank you.
After Akiko Kurachi, we will have Juan De La Paz, followed by Brian Terry and Megan Wickham.
Hi, I'm Akiko Kurachi. I'm a mother of a second grader at John Stanford, a dual-language program. She was so lucky to be able to get in because she was a heritage speaker. I felt so, it was like a huge rush of relief when she got in, because not only is the dual-language program something to learn language, you know, a second language, which is amazingly great for the brain, but it also gives a supportive community where, again, very diverse, all over from Seattle, all these families come together to learn these languages and to participate in the culture and everything. I do believe it creates an environment that fosters cultural curiosity, you know, flexibility of the brain, and to also be respectful of each other. And that's definitely a big theme there. I do feel like having this option taken away from us would be a huge hit for the whole community. I can tell you Seattle is growing so big as a global city now. Every day, I'm a medical doctor. I see so many people who speak a different language and it's so huge for me to be able to speak Japanese to my patients. A quarter of my patients are Japanese. So it's such a, I think it really feeds into this, you know, idea that Seattle will grow to be a big global society as we go forward. So yeah, I don't really have a lot of answers in terms of how do we address the Green Lake crowded situation. I know that my previous neighborhood in Magnolia, you know, they did build a whole another school to accommodate more students there. So I saw that building go up and so, yeah, it's really hard to know how do you accommodate that. But I do like to beseech the committee to preserve the schools as a dual-language program. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Juan De La Paz and I'm a Mexican-American. And I got a couple of notes here from my wife. I guess she gave me this so I don't say something that'd get kicked out of the school district. So my middle child, Christian, is twice exceptional, which means he's got a learning disability, but he's super intelligent at the same time. So four years ago, I get a call from his school at Wenlock that Christian flipped his table, which is very unheard of. If you know Christian, he's the kindest person that you can meet. So we went over to the school and talked to the teacher and talked to Christian and Christian basically said, "This is a very boring school. It's not challenging me." So we talked to the teacher and the teacher agreed, "Yep, okay, I'll challenge him." Basically gave him same material, just five times as much as other students. And that wasn't enough. And so basically, we got from another parent that told us about the highly-capable program. So I said, "What is it going to cost?" And so they told me, "It's $250. Fine, let's pay this." To get him tested and he didn't succeed on the first test. And so they told us that, and I talked to Christian and he was like, "The testing itself was, I couldn't concentrate. There was a lot of noise, there were a lot of issues going on." Fine, so now there's requirements of get private testing and so my wife's like, "Hey, by the way, it's going to cost another $700 to do this. Okay, let's take out a credit card." To take out basically debt so we can get our kid tested to get into this program that he needs, that he needs it. Christian's been in this program for the past four years and now he's a fifth grader at Fairmont Elementary and he's exceeding. He is pretty much being taught the same math as my eighth grader, which is incredible. He's beyond exceptional in this school. And so I'm telling you guys, the program works. HCC works. The problem comes to the testing. You know, when I have to get a credit card and get in debt to pay for my kid, that's, for some families, that's two months of rent. So I talked to you, fix that problem. It's the testing that's the problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
9% of our students have been identified as highly-capable. For years, we have tailored our program to best meet their needs. But at what cost to the other 91% of students, especially those furthest from educational justice? We identified a homogenous group of highly-capable students in order to make it easier for teachers to teach and for students to make friends, but this meant excluding virtually all underprivileged students. We serve these mostly privileged students in large cohorts at pathway schools. The concentration of privilege gave them more power to advocate for their students and more resources to fund enrichment programs. But this meant a depletion of resources and power from neighborhood schools, especially hurting those students furthest from educational justice and all students at neighborhood schools who benefit from more access to advanced academics. And finally, in many cases, we place these mostly white, highly-capable classrooms in mostly black neighborhood schools, creating so-called slave ship schools that propagate white supremacy culture. Many other districts have found good solutions to these problems. Students from all backgrounds are identified equitably in accordance with the WAC. They meet the needs of these students in their neighborhood schools and never place a highly-capable classroom with a noticeably different demographic than the school in which it is placed. It is time for us to do this too. Please make the necessary changes to our program to reflect the interest of all of our students, not just the 9%. Thank you.
After Megan Wickham, we will have Vivian Maritz, followed by Julie Van Arkin.
Thank you for your continued work. I want to tell you about my family and the impact dual-language has had. My father-in-law is Japanese-American and was born in an internment camp during World War II. When we first shared with him that we were sending our kids to John Stanford International, he was genuinely shocked to learn that a program like the dual-language Japanese pathway existed. Surprised that his grandson could learn Japanese in an environment that would celebrate his whole identity. His lived experience of being Japanese-American in post-war Seattle was quite different. My son is autistic and struggles with social cues and communication. I knew there was research that said dual-language was a good tool for kids with autism, but I didn't fully understand it. The code-switching skills he has gained through the DLI program have gemmed rise so strongly that he no longer needs behavioral therapy services. The school model is impactful. The community of teachers and families in that building has changed his life trajectory. I strongly encourage the board and the superintendent to consider expanding the DLI program for several reasons that I believe are in line with the stated goals of the district's equity standards. When implemented thoughtfully, dual-language can center ELL students, celebrate their gifts, and allow for families to connect with their teachers in their home language. Dual-language schools can be a powerful tool to fight the segregation of the city. 24-hour credit graduation requirements are more accessible when students earn credit for their natural bilingual talents that are accelerated through these education programs. And lastly, dual-language programs close the opportunity and achievement gaps. I'm here to advocate for increasing the set-of-side for heritage speakers, maintaining strong pathways in established programs, following the task force report, expanding the programs to see home languages that have not yet been valued by the district. More families deserve the feeling we had of seeing my father-in-law excited that his culture was going to be represented in a system that always ignored him. If you thoughtfully expand these programs to the languages already spoken in the district, more people can be delighted to tell their relatives that Seattle schools is seeing their child's whole identity. Thank you.
Thank you, board members, for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am Vivian Maritz. I am a mother of a second grader and a first grader at John Stanford International School. Several members of my school community and the dual-language immersion community have already highlighted tonight the many cognitive and social-emotional benefits of language immersion. I join them in asking you to sustain and even increase your support for dual-language immersion programs. I'm speaking to you tonight, however, more specifically about the geozone changes that are proposed that would give Green Lake families a tiebreaker to attend John Stanford International School and McDonald International School. I believe that this particular solution would be a step toward reducing school choice for Seattle families. Currently, 15% of spaces at John Stanford and McDonald are reserved for native speakers. The students must take and pass a language proficiency test to secure one of those spaces. And the truth is that the bar is high. Many students of Japanese and Latino descent would not pass. Our country has a complicated history and the mother tongue of many of these families was repressed. Thankfully, times have changed and I believe there are many second-generation, third-generation, fourth-generation Japanese and Latino families who would love the opportunity for their kids to speak Japanese or Spanish, be able to communicate with their relatives, and have a connection to their heritage. This is a real choice Seattle Public Schools has given these families in making John Stanford and McDonald an option school. This board has a great record in equity and I ask that as you consider your options in addressing the overcapacity issues at Green Lake, particularly focus on the geozones for those schools, that you use this racial equity lens. The sign behind you is written in the first language of Seattle. I ask that you give Seattle families the choice to learn in their family's first language as well. And I just want to add... Okay. Thank you.
Finish your sentence.
Oh, I have a few more minutes. I just wanted to say...
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
You have a few more sentences.
Oh, oh, a few more sentences. A personal note, my children who are so touched by the fact that they have teachers that look like them. And it's really hard for us to find that opportunity even within Seattle or our broader community. And I really thank the school district for making that possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Julie Van Arkin and I've been coming to this podium to speak about Southeast boundary changes for six years now. But for the first time in a long time, I'm hopeful. You have three new boundary proposals to choose from and one of them, Scenario G, is a racially equitable scenario. In this case, G stands for good. Scenario G displaces the fewest children overall by 160 to 200 students. It displaces the fewest Black students, Asian students, English language learners, and special education students, and presumably the fewest Latinx students, Native students, and Pacific Islander students. And based on the workgroup data I've seen, it looks like Scenario G only displaces two children from their walk zone while the others displace 68 and 69 children from their walk zone. Please ask staff to add this walk zone data to the public maps so everyone can see it. And while you're at it, please also ask staff how much the different scenarios will affect transportation costs and how adding unnecessary routes may create further delays in bus service. Even though Scenario G is by far the most equitable scenario, you may receive more public comments in support of Scenario F, which displaces the fewest white students. As you receive feedback in support of particular scenarios, keep in mind who's in the room and who is not in the room and support our students furthest from educational justice. Thank you.
This concludes public testimony for this evening.
Okay, we're going to round back to the consent agenda. Motion, please.
I move passage of the consent agenda.
Give me one second. And would folks like to remove anything from the consent agenda at this time? And please state the number and the title.
I would like to actually pull Consent Number Nine, the Resolution for Final Acceptance for the Lowell Heights Elementary.
Any other removals from the consent agenda? Seeing none? We have a motion for the consent agenda as amended.
I move passage of the consent agenda as amended.
I second the motion.
All those in favor of passing the consent agenda as amended, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay.
Point of personal privilege.
Yes, sir.
Would the president support a motion to bring Action Item Four up to the beginning of our action items list in, out of respect for our transportation partners that have come to discuss that item? Is that a viable thing? If so, I would like to make a motion.
Chief Narver, I believe that's part of my privilege. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, number four is up.
Do you need a motion or...
Nope. That's part of my professional privilege here.
Thank you.
That's for all the extra good happy work. Okay, number four is our newest action item. For student settlement agreement and contract modifications. Motion, please. And I might add, this is for intro and introduction. Intro and action. Intro and introduction. Hello. More coffee, please.
I move that the school board approve the settlement agreement with Exhibits One, Two, and Three as attached to the Board Action Report with such minor additions, deletions, and modifications as deemed necessary by the superintendent. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
I second the motion.
Chief Podesta, I see you at the podium. The floor is yours, kind sir.
Thank you. Fred Podesta, Chief Operations Officer. As the board, staff, Seattle Public Schools families are aware, Seattle Public Schools has struggled to provide consistent transportation services the last couple of years. These problems, these challenges have been particularly severe at the start of school with yellow bus service and have been largely caused by a lack of qualified drivers to drive our buses, which is a problem shared by many districts across the country. While we still have many improvements to make in our overall transportation system, this year, we're off to a much better start. By way of comparison, between September 2018 and December 2019, last year, we were averaging 67 late routes a day. This year, we're averaging 17. In the fall of 2018, 19% of our buses did not have a full-time assigned driver. Right now, we're at 7% and we're working hard to close that gap. To achieve these improvements that we've gotten year over year, we had to do a lot of things. And in all honesty, this didn't start just now. It started in the spring and we enjoyed pretty good service, better service in the last spring through the end of the school year than we... last spring through the end of the school year than we felt in the fall and in the spring. And really to do this, what we needed to make some changes, we need to change our relationship with our service provider for student to really be a partner. We encouraged as part of that relation for student to do, offer competitive wages and benefits in a very competitive labor market to attract drivers and retain drivers and to change their recruiting and retention practices so we can have the qualified drivers that you see in the room to drive our students to make sure that people aren't missing instruction We, the fall to spring improvement has been a common practice. You know, we've seen that arc for a few years where we have trouble with the start of school. We had that problem in 1718, we had that problem in 1819, but weren't, in previous years, we were not able to sustain that into the fall, even as things got better in the spring. This year again is different. We've been working hard since the spring to make sure there are enough drivers, to make sure we have a contract, a relationship that works. I think we've seen those results. We saw them in the spring, we're seeing them in the fall and now is the time, I think, to solidify those changes and amend our contract and settle whatever differences we have between the district and First Student to, in contract, get a, make permanent our relationship with First Student and over the contract period and give them the tools to retain and recruit enough drivers to meet our needs. I think the board action before you does that. And the main terms that are, you'll see, are we release all claims. Right now, you know, we've been in very serious conversations with First Student for more than a year with claims and counterclaims. It's time to settle those. Again, we need to approach each other as partners and release claims against each other. As part of this, First Student will make a payment based on the damages that were in the last contract of $400,000 to the district and will also compensate us for services we had to procure from others in the last school year for the added cost of us. It eliminates liquidated damages from the contract and moves to a performance pay system that incentivizes us to work together on a positive front and frankly eliminates the adversarial punitive relationship that we had in our old relationship to something where we're working together and trying to get these results. It eliminates restrictions on our ability to hire other service providers if we need to. It exercises an option that is already built into the contract to extend the contract for another year. We know that we need to think past our current way of doing business, but we need stability and certainty for a longer period than just through this contract year, which is where we would stand right now. We would need more time. So we would like to exercise that option now and secure First Student services through August 2021 and then fix prices through then so we also have the costs understood and First Student and its drivers understand how their agreements work. And lastly, it adds a licensing for a smartphone app, the first view, that would allow better real-time communications with parents and allow parents and families to track bus locations while they're in transit. We have a lot of work to make that actually happen, but getting the product provided to us as part of the contract is a great first step. And so I think you've seen since last March, April, May improvements, those have continued and we've re-upped this year and so far off to a pretty good start. So I strongly recommend that we move forward and put in place a contract that supports the improvements that we've already made.
I'm going to take privilege and ask you a couple of really direct questions, if I might. And Chief Narver, front and center, please. So our newspapers and social media expanded about some pretty extraordinary damages for every day. And can you talk about whether or not those damages that were touted would be defensible in court? Please. Because it seems like we've got a bit of a wind shift here.
What I'll say, first of all, is that the legal team was, has very carefully reviewed this agreement and it is our recommendation, in addition to Director Podesta, that the board approve the settlement agreement. On the specific question, I cannot in an open meeting talk about an assessment of litigation risk and what was going to, what was likely to happen or the range of possible outcomes. There were, as Director Podesta said, claims going in both directions. Claims by First Student against the district, claims by the district against First Student. This is a settlement of all of those claims and the focus really is, as Director Podesta said, on resetting the business partnership moving forward. I, in an executive session, I could go into more detail about analysis of how those claims could have played out over the course of litigation. It's really nothing I can talk about here, but I will reiterate the legal team's recommendation that the board approve the agreement.
Okay, we need to create a record though because the record previously was different. Thank you for that. Not surprised by your advice.
Okay, thank you.
Chief Podesta, what do we tell the parents who write to us with these frankly horrific, frightening stories about their children, booster seats, et cetera? You heard that testimony tonight.
I heard that testimony. I read the article.
And you have been a recipient of many of those emails.
I have. And that, again, stability in our driver workforce is what will lead to better service for drivers. I think we heard public testimony tonight that, you know, having a different driver every day was part of the problem. And so this really comes down to, you know, having a stable workforce and that really leads to how we compensate and recruit drivers. And those are the things we're trying to change. We're in much better shape than we were this time last year and we're working hard to continue to close those gaps. This amendment will give further tools to help do that and I'm confident we will continue to make this better. The start of school is a very difficult time. It is, you know, starting up the show all over again, but compared to where we've been, it's much better and we'll, instead of things smoothing out in January as they have in the past couple of years, we're expecting them to smooth out in the next month.
And is it a fair assumption, given the number of yellow vests and labor brothers and sisters in the room, that labor is in favor of this?
It's not my place to speak for the bargaining unit, but I would assume that's the case.
I tried so hard to softball that. Thank you. I need comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues, please. Director Burke?
I had an opportunity to meet personally with a few of our brothers and sisters and I thank you for joining us and for signaling your feelings on this particular item. It was very clearly telegraphed and I really appreciate, you know, what we continue to learn as an educational institution is that, you know, partnerships are far superior to punitive. Every day, every action, every person, when we can collaborate, we get farther and I think this is really evidence of us walking our talk. So I thank all of the teams that have worked to put this together and bring what was previously in my mind a publicly and privately contentious issue into something that I feel like we as a district can be proud of.
Director Pinkham?
Thank you. I can recall when we were actually discussing the contract a while back and one of the questions I had was how many hours of bus drivers had to work just to qualify for health insurance? And it was tremendous amount because they were considered not just their nine-month, but for the full 12 months for their hours. So I'm particularly happy to see that we are increasing, it looks like, health coverage for our bus drivers along with the wages. So thanks for your help on getting that done.
Seeing no further comments, questions, concerns, roll call, please.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Hersi?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye. And thank you to our staff, our labor partners and those folks at First Student that managed to help us get here. Thank you very much. Let's take a 15-minute break so folks can get some food and a bite of fresh air. Be back here at exactly.